So first of all, I'm going to apologize off the bat for my voice. I'm getting over a little bit of laryngitis. So if you can't hear me, just let me know and I'll try to speak up the best I can. If my voice gives out after this half hour, you can't ask me any questions.
So instead of what time we end tonight, my money's on which goes first? Her voice or her computer battery?
Yeah, my battery. So the training session tonight is going to go a little bit beyond just special permits. I'm going to try to pack as much as I can into this half hour, talking about first just kind of setting the groundwork for some basic civics. You know, where the planning board lies in the governmental structure within the city, and talking specifically about the planning board's jurisdiction. And then lastly, about the implementation of the planning board's jurisdiction, how the planning board makes its decisions. I think a lot of this is going to be information that you've heard before, but I think that it's always a good refresher to kind of get back to basics and kind of ground ourselves in fundamentals again. So, basic civics. First of all, you know, planning and zoning is the world that we live in here at the planning board. The purpose of that being to guide the future growth and development of the city, protect resources that we have, and plan for the future. Now each board within the city of Beacon serves a different function when it comes to planning and zoning. First, you have the city council, your legislative body made up of elected members of the government. They set the policy and they adopt the laws. So the policy, when it comes to planning and zoning, is set forth in your comprehensive plan. The city council has adopted a comprehensive plan that sets forth, ooh, I just really amplified, that sets forth the, thank you, the policy and the vision that the city council has for future development of the city. That comprehensive plan was based on outreach to residents and constituents within the city at the time it was adopted. Then the adoption of zoning, the local laws. The laws implement the vision set forth in the comprehensive plan. And again, that's within the jurisdiction of the city council. The city council has reserved unto itself some land use approval authority. In some municipalities, the legislative board delegates all of its land use approval authority to the planning board or the zoning board, as the case may be. Sometimes, the legislative body retains some of that authority. There's some examples, I know in Westchester, town of Greenberg, the town board there retains site plan approval authority, but only for properties five acres or more. So the legislative body really has the authority to kind of carve out what it's going to keep to itself, as far as land use approval authority goes. Here, generally, the city council reviews and approves concept plans in the Fishkill Creek Development Zone, some special permit authority. There are, you know, limited instances where the city council has reserved that authority for themselves. Otherwise, they've delegated authority to the planning board and to the zoning board. So the planning board, obviously made up of seven members, and you have jurisdiction over site plans, subdivision, some special permits. You also serve as the architectural review board, and coming along with that, the historic review for certificates of appropriateness. The zoning board, so the planning board is an administrative body, as opposed to legislative. So you implement the local laws that are set by the city council. You don't have authority to interpret those local laws. You don't have authority to vary those local laws unless there's specific authority written into the zoning code. For example, you have parking waiver authority in some instances, like in the CMS district. There are certain instances where you can waive parking. There are certain instances where you can waive landscaping requirements. So, but unless it's specifically written into the zoning code, you don't have the authority to waive or vary the zoning requirements. That's where we get to the zoning board. The zoning board is a quasi-judicial board, and they are responsible for applications to vary the zoning requirements, where you can't, there's no municipality on earth that can legislate for every circumstance, right? There's always going to be unique circumstances that come up, whether it's, you know, a strangely shaped property, you know, certain environmental constraints perhaps that hindered development on the property. And applicants as property owners have the right to apply to the zoning board, to seek a variance from the zoning laws. The zoning board has a very tight standard of review. They have to perform a balancing test to weigh, you know, whether the benefits of granting the variance outweigh the detriments to the neighborhood. And by doing that, there's five factors that they have to weigh and vary. They cannot go outside of those five factors. It's a very prescribed standard of review. They also have the authority to hear appeals from building inspector determinations. So we have our building inspector, who is the first line of defense in interpreting the zoning code. So whenever there's a question of interpretation of any zoning code provision, the building inspector is the authority on that. He or she makes that determination. That determination may be appealed by either the property owner or somebody withstanding to appeal that to the zoning board, who then has the authority to review that and determine whether the building inspector was right or not. So, and then beyond that, it would then go to Dutchess County Supreme Court if someone wanted to continue to challenge the interpretation. So that's sort of just a little overview of basic civics, of where the city council, the planning board, and the zoning board all kind of lie and work together in this planning and zoning context. So with respect to the planning board's jurisdiction, you have authority over site plan applications. In section 223-25, it says that a site plan is required for changes of use and pretty much everything else except a single-family home. So if it requires a building permit, it likely requires a site plan approval. And in site plan applications, what the board is really looking at are things like the layout of the proposed building or structures, stormwater, traffic, parking, lighting, landscaping, internal pedestrian and vehicular circulation, noise or visual impacts. So it's pretty broad-ranging discretion and authority that you have in the site plan review, to make sure that everything on the site is laid out appropriately in relation to the neighborhood around it. The next type of application that you typically see are subdivisions. Subdivisions can also include lot mergers or re-subdivisions. So when you have lots that were previously shown on a subdivision plat filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office, and those lot lines are going to be adjusted or merged, those lots are going to be merged together, they need to get approval from your board. And then you have your typical subdivision application, where you have, you know, one or more lots that are divided into additional lots. Generally, with subdivision applications, you are approving the layout of the lots and the other infrastructure components, the location of roadways, whether they be private or public, stormwater basins, stormwater treatment measures, and other similar components. You're not approving things like the architecture, or even really the building layout. The applicant needs to demonstrate that the lot would support, you know, a reasonable building within the building envelope. But that building layout can change when the property owner files for a building permit application, unless that building layout was really integral to your approval of the subdivision, as indicated in your approval resolution. So if a subdivision is zoning compliant, so it meets, you know, lot width, lot size, you can, you know, fit a reasonable building envelope, taking into consideration all the setbacks, et cetera, there's frankly not a lot of wiggle room for modifications, but there is some. For example, there may be environmental conditions on the sites, steep slopes, wetlands, rock outcroppings, things of that nature, that may require adjustments to the lot lines in order to create a layout that works with the natural features of the site and works with the existing community. A good example of that is the application that you just considered several months ago, Beacon Views. So there, that was a subdivision, and there they came in with a certain lot count, which was ultimately reduced by quite a bit because of the wetlands on site and because of the mitigation that this board, you know, required the applicant to achieve. So there are examples where, you know, things can be adjusted based on environmental constraints on the property. If a subdivision doesn't meet the standards in chapter 195 of the code, this is an instance where the city council has included authority in the code for you to vary those standards. So if the applicant can't meet the strict letter of the law, and it makes sense to vary that standard, you do have the authority to do so. Next is special permits. So a special permit applies to a use that is determined by the city council to be permitted in the zone. It's a permitted use, but it does have to meet standards set forth in the code in order to be granted approval. So if the use meets those, that criteria in the code, then the special permit has to be issued. There's no discretion there. The discretion lies in whether the applicant has met those standards. That is the determination for the planning board to make, whether the information that's been put forth by the applicant sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the standards for a special permit. There are two different kinds of standards. There's general standards, which are in 223-18 of your code. Those are, there's five or six of them. Those apply to every special permit that you review. Then, for each particular use that requires a special permit, there may be a set of individual, more specific standards that are required for that particular use. Both the general and the specific standards have to be met.
Can I have a quick question?
Yes.
And I should remember this from our days updating the comprehensive plan, but what criteria has gone into what lots special permit requirements should carry, right? So there are certain lots that have special permit requirements, others that don't. Maybe it's maybe a sort of a simple question and I'm just missing it, but...
Yeah, so it's by district and by use, right? So in certain zoning districts, you allow certain uses, either by site plan alone or by special permit. A lot of times, the special permit uses are things that need a little bit more control. Sometimes, like fitness centers, gyms tend to be, I find those tend to be special permit uses because, you know, of the nature of, you know, a lot of people coming in for a class at the same time as another, you know, class is leaving.
So for all intents and purposes, it's specific uses that may have the potential for the need for more rigorous or additional requirements?
Yeah, and as long as the use meets those requirements...
Yeah, that's understood.
It's basically considered to be a permitted, it's a permitted use in the district. So it's been determined by the city council that that use, you know, conforms to the character of that particular district as long as...
As long as it meets those additional prescriptive requirements.
So the board also serves as the architectural review board in the city. You guys wear two hats. We found several years ago, probably more than several years ago at this point, that there was a lot of time being spent at planning board meetings focused on architecture. And at that time, the board created the architectural review subcommittee, so that a smaller group of the planning board can meet with the applicant to discuss architecture, really work out some of the details, and then bring that recommended architecture back to the full board for your ultimate review and approval. We found that that was a more efficient use of the planning board's time. And then as far as historic preservation go, you are the approval authority for certificates of appropriateness for certain applications in the historic district and landmark overlay zone, and the standards for that are in chapter 134 of the code. I'm going to jump, because we only have about 10 minutes, I'm going to jump to talking about the implementation of the planning board's jurisdiction, so mainly your decision-making The main takeaway is that decisions cannot be arbitrary and capricious. If they are, they'll be overturned by the court in a second. What this means is that decisions have to have a rational basis in the record. What is the record? The record is everything that's before the board at the time it makes its decision. It's the application materials provided by the applicant, it's John Russo and John Clark's review memos, it's testimony from members of the public during the public hearings, public comment letters, expert reports, literally everything that is before you at the time you make your decision. The record, many times, consists of both lay opinion and expert opinion and testimony. So in that instance, the courts have decided that they're going to look at that testimony differently, that it's just weighted differently by the courts. Expert opinion is weighted more heavily than lay opinion. So if an expert says X, a board member can't say, "Well, my gut says Y, so I'm deciding based on Y." That will be overturned very easily. Traffic is usually the best example of this. Of course, as our traffic engineer enters the room, nobody agrees with traffic engineers, right Frank? Everyone questions traffic. It's always, well, you know, I've been at that intersection and I have to wait much longer than it seems like it's reflected in this report. So that tends to be a topic where this comes up quite often. But if a traffic engineer says that a roadway has the capacity for the proposed project and intersections will operate at acceptable levels of service, the board can question the traffic engineer's study, can ask about, well, what was considered to come to that conclusion? Did you consider, you know, when were the counts for, the traffic counts done for that that resulted in that conclusion? Were they done, you know, at three o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday, or were they done during the peak hour? What is the peak hour? Maybe the traffic counts didn't reflect the true peak hour. Maybe the peak hour in that particular neighborhood isn't like four to six or five to six. Maybe it's slightly shifted. So there, you can question the inputs that go into that conclusion to make sure that the conclusion is based on the right information for your community. But at the end of the day, unless a board member is also a traffic engineer, a board member can't cast that expert opinion aside just based on gut feeling or lay opinion. The other point there is the, a board can't base its decisions on generalized community opposition. It's not sort of a popularity contest, it's not, you know, it's, you're not an elected official. You have to base your decisions on objective criteria in the record. So what happens when a board's decision is challenged? What happens is whoever's challenging it, whether it's a doc denial and the applicant challenges it, or it's an approval, and maybe a member of the community challenges it, it goes to...
What was the first kind of denial you just mentioned? A doc denial?
Sorry if I mumbled, but just a denial.
Oh, got it, I'm sorry. I thought it was a specific type of denial.
Sorry, I'm rushing because I know we only have a couple minutes left. So it'll go to the Dutchess County Supreme Court in the form of an Article 78 petition. Article 78 is statute under the Civil Practice Law and Rules, and the court reviews to determine whether the decision had a rational basis. The court is only going to look at the record that was before the board. If the court confines that there was a rational basis for the board's decision, more often than not, that will be upheld. Courts grant deference to local boards. The court is not going to second guess the board's decision. Even if the court felt that the decision should have gone the other way, the court's not going to second guess that, as long as there is a basis for your decision in the In SECR, which, I mean, I could spend another hour talking about SECR, but for SECR purposes, the standard is similar. It's called a hard look standard. Did the board make a reasonable inquiry into the relevant environmental concerns for that particular project? Not every single conceivable environmental issue has to be reviewed, only those that are relevant to the application and will have a meaningful impact. For SECR purposes, the board does have to make what's called a reasoned elaboration for your secret determination, your neg deck or pos deck. So that's why we have, in addition to the part three form that you fill out, we prepare that, you know, five, 10, 15-page document that goes through for each relevant environmental impact. What are the pieces in the record that support your decision on whether there's a neg deck or pos deck? So again, the court is really going to look at, did the board identify the relevant areas of concern? Did the board take a hard look at those, make reasonable inquiries into those concerns, and then provide a reasoned elaboration for your decision? So I want to leave a couple minutes for any questions that you have, but I think that, again, the overarching takeaway is the importance of having a rational basis in the record for any decision that you make.
Thanks, Jennifer. Yeah, a lot to cover.
Yeah.
And you did very well, thank you, in the limited time we have. So, question?
I do, I have a question. Could you talk a little bit about the relationship between the SECR standards versus the special use permit standards, because there are some overlapping and...
Right, so the question being, yeah, interplay between SECR and special permit. So for SECR, the question that you're asking yourself is, could there be a significant adverse environmental impact? Those are sort of the buzzwords. That's your determination of significance. And that determination is based on, again, all of the information before you, all of the studies, testimony, review memos from your consultants, to determine, will there be a significant adverse environmental impact? If the answer is no, based on all of the information that goes into the quote-unquote "proposed action," the application before you, you issue the negative declaration. That is different from your special permit standards, which are zoning requirement, that you need to make sure that each of those, however many standards, are satisfied by the application. A lot of times, there are overlapping considerations, right? So one of the general special permit standards, if I recall correctly, yeah, one of the general special permit standards is that parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use and properly located, suitably screened from adjoining residential uses. Now, a lot of that, that could be, that is an environmental impact too, right? For traffic and parking, you want to make sure that the proposed use has adequate parking. I'm just skimming through here. Also, there's another standard that says that the operations in connection with special use will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes. Again, noise is an environmental category for SECR. So there are, there is some overlap there.
But are, there are different standards for each. So if they're hypothetically speaking, there's a parking issue that doesn't rise to a significant adverse environmental impact for SECR, but for the special use permit, it's not adequate?
Right, so, yeah, so sort of the delta between, you're asking about the delta between it rising to a significant adverse impact and then making sure that they've met that special permit standard, where does that fall? I mean, so I have seen cases where a board issues a negative declaration and makes findings that there's no significant impact on something like parking or noise or wetland impacts, but then denies an application based on those grounds, that there is an impact to wetlands or there's an impact to stormwater. And the courts have, I've seen courts overturn. Will they overturn that decision in every instance? I think it depends on the facts of the particular application, but I think that you do need to be careful there.
I mean, just what you just described sounds kind of like a logical conundrum. Is there ever a situation where you, why would you have a negative declaration and then deny a permit for the same, either it's...
Typically, you would not.
Yeah, I mean, because the challenge does come due to the fact that the secret environmental review activity usually happens at the beginning of an application. You would hope that even though you're closer to the beginning of an application, the applicant has sussed out enough some of those potential impacts, such that they're doing the work to align any requirements of special permit, right, with the SECR. So some of the onus should also be on the applicant. And we've all gotten past this conundrum of a negative declaration meaning no adverse environmental impact found, right?
Yeah. So just one quick question, like on an issue like noise, the criteria are the same though between, or are they, between the SECR and the special use permit? We're using the city's ordinances on what's permissible in terms of noise for both decision points?
Right, well, that's a good question. We do have our local ordinance on noise, right? The special permit discusses certain aspects of, and of course, everybody should comply with the local ordinances, but there aren't any conflicting, is that your question? Is there any conflicting issues between local ordinance, different zones, and special use?
I don't think it's conflicting, but there is an obligation to make sure that you're checking all those boxes, right? You're not creating a significant noise impact. You're complying with the city's noise ordinance, and you're also not creating anything that's more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise than would be the operations of any other permitted use.
And again, when you use the word objectionable, you're talking within, like what I call, like measurable, enforceable criteria, not opinion or desire or acceptance.
Right, that's the reasonable, and I think compliance with the noise ordinance is an objective and reasonable measure for what's objectionable or not.
Yep, great. Any other questions?
When you're talking about different criteria for those two different permits, do the SECR handbook and the workbooks that are used by people doing those, they may differ. And what I'm wondering is if, in some cases, there's a different judgment standard through the workbooks and handbooks, the various guidelines that the state issues for SECR and the ordinances that the city has for a special permit. So if those are different for, like, let's say, noise or for disturbance, not the specific law, but the review standard, let's say, how would you reconcile that?
Yeah, so I mean, the standard for SECR is significant adverse impact. So, you know, I always get asked the question, well, what does significant mean? There is no concrete definition, and that's on purpose, because that same statute is applied throughout New York State, right? And what's significant in Beacon might not be significant in Albany, might not be significant, you know, in Yonkers. So each community really... So, each community really has to decide for itself what significant means. And then, as far as the zoning special permit standards go, it's, you read the standard and you determine whether, based on the information before you, they've met that. I think, you know, we just talked about one example with the objectionable noise. I think it's reasonable that if they are complying with the noise ordinance, that it's not objectionable, right? But if they were to, if an applicant were to exceed the noise ordinance and exceed it in a way that is really, you know, egregious, I think that that would demonstrate non-compliance with that standard...
Significant, not egregious.
And may even rise to the level of being a significant...
Significant, I think that's the one word, not egregious, I just want to say, because that seems like a higher standard to me.
One thing that has kind of jumped out at me a bunch of times in the wording about noise criteria, is that I think I've seen in the language we've used, the analogy that the permissible noise level is comparable to passing traffic. You know, I've seen that in the write-up. And passing cars are generally not constant, although noise from an event is relatively constant over the duration of the event, which is just something that, it's just an observation that jumps out at me every time I see that language. Traffic varies in intensity, and there are periods when there's no traffic, especially in the evening, but...
That strikes me as falling into the category somewhat of subjective, just in terms of, yeah, it can be used as a good sort of benchmark of what something might sound like at its maximum, but it doesn't land anywhere necessarily in, you know, some of the prescriptive, like the noise ordinance that we have to comply with. Anyway, this is certainly something we can continue to talk about until 11:30.
Can we do this again next month?
Yeah. Yeah, and I know we've done these refreshers, and they're always very helpful at intervals. I always find the secret process refresher to be especially helpful. Anyway.
I even have a PowerPoint on that one, I could do for next time.
Oh, yeah.
Nice. Thank you, Jennifer.